We're gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we're gonna have a moment of silence here. But we've got with us here the Woodland Drum Line. So if y'all will stand up here and join us, we'll let those young folks lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. And this time we'll have a moment of silence for Denise Imberton, Special Education Consultant in the District, and Brooklyn Sharp's a student from our district, as well as all victims from Western Kentucky tornadoes. It's been a tragic week, so let's have a moment of silence for those folks. Dawn Johnson is with us tonight on the computer. She's, we've got her quarantined out there. And so Steve, you want to take care of the board commitments for us?
To improve our effectiveness, the Hardin County Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, to be prepared, to be professional, to demonstrate financial stewardship, to represent the entire district and support district goals, and to support board decisions.
All right, thank you. And next is recognitions, and Mr. John Wright's gonna take care of that.
Yes, sir. We have some wonderful students, some staff members, and a member of the community I think that you'll recognize, that we'll recognize this evening with our HCS Stronger Together Award. So, Mr. Chairman, if you'll pass that resolution, we'll get started.
Okay, I need a motion.
I move we pass the recognition, excuse me, motion.
I'll second the motion.
All right, have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And when I, when we talk about these two students who have won, or have earned, rather, the Stronger Together Award, I think you'll really see what that award exemplifies with these two very special students from Blue, from John Hardin High School. Raina Joyner, I know Raina's here, come on up. And Samara Higgins, I know Samara, I think she cannot, could not attend tonight. But, so Raina, we're gonna put you in a spotlight here for just a second, okay? And one of the board members will present you with a plaque. But please, as we share here, what these two ladies did to deserve this award. Both, or Raina's a junior, Samara is a John Hardin freshman. They recently initiated the Project Senior Citizen at John Hardin High School. Their purpose is to educate students on elder abuse as well as assist senior citizens in our community. These young ladies often have a display set up at lunch to educate students and staff daily on issues senior citizens in our community face. Knowing that senior citizens are often alone during the holiday season, Raina and Samara have formed a John Hardin High School Christmas caroling team along with a small band by its side to play songs for the seniors. They also are selling candy canes and taking donations at lunch to make goodie bags with Christmas cards in them that have heartfelt messages written by other John Hardin students. Raina and Samara initiated Project Senior Citizen at John Hardin on their own. They were not prompted to do so by anyone else. They simply saw a need in our community and made a decision to take action. Their decision has inspired other John Hardin students and staff to follow their lead and not only help with this project, but find other ways to help our community as well. Thank you so much, Raina. We appreciate you. And Mr. Wells shared with me that the motto with John Hardin this year is above the line in everything that they do. So Raina and Samara are certainly two students who definitely exemplify what it means to live above the line. So thank you, we appreciate, appreciate you both. Ms. Jennifer Helm, Ms. Jennifer, are you here? There she is. Ms. Jennifer Helm is an instructional assistant at Lakewood Elementary School. Ms. Helm provided some critical assistance well beyond the sense of her duties recently, the scope of her duties. After a field trip to the Louisville Zoo, the bus that they were on was involved in an accident on the way back to school. Ms. Morgan, I think you and I remember that. Mrs. Helm was on the bus and immediately attended to the students and helped keep everyone calm as the emergency workers came to the scene. After the students were loaded on another bus and returned to school to wait for their parents to pick them up, Mrs. Helm worked diligently to keep the students calm while they waited for their parents. She went to the library and checked out books about animals. She sat on the floor of the school lobby with the students and began reading books to them and talking about the animals they had seen at the zoo that day. She even asked them comprehension questions from the books and affirmed the students' responses. Mrs. Helm could have just clocked out upon arriving at the school and gone on home, but the needs of her students were her primary concern. We appreciate the time and love that she gives to the students at Lakewood every day, especially this day. Thank you, Ms. Helm, we appreciate you. All right, our community Stronger Together Award winner, or honoree, is someone I believe you'll recognize, Mayor DeVal. I know, I think I saw you here. Come on up here, Mayor. This is J.J. DeVal. He's the mayor of Radcliffe. He's a good friend, not only of mine, but of Hardin County schools. Mr. DeVal, Mayor DeVal, embraced the Hardin County Schools Crado School Program in the Radcliffe community. After hearing that the Crado School Program needed a home, Mayor DeVal donated a space owned by the City of Radcliffe. The City of Radcliffe also provides free internet utilities and has gone above and beyond to make sure the program's needs are met. Mayor DeVal recognizes the importance of early childhood education and community partnerships, which we all know. Mayor DeVal and the City of Radcliffe are true partners in education for our students and our staff. They are always there with a helping hand, heart, and for that, the district is most grateful. Thank you, Mayor, we appreciate you.
Thank you, J.J.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
While Mr. DeVal's here, we, I think the three mayors are working the closest together of any group of mayors that I've ever seen, and it really is helping our community and our schools, and we appreciate it.
Absolutely.
All right. I knew something was coming good from somewhere, I just didn't know. But you all are doing a great job, we appreciate it. All right. Focus on academics, you gonna cover that, John?
Well, I'm just gonna introduce them, and I'm gonna let the folks here from Woodland introduce these students, and I think you'll be amazed, they have gone on a tour of the building, I think just maybe to calm their nerves a little bit. So they, they are settling in and they're good to go. I'm proud of each and every one of them.
And I think they picked their name, the Woodland Drum Line, tonight.
Yeah, that's awesome. Do you wanna introduce them?
Well, the, these students have worked tirelessly after school a couple months to get ready for this, and I'm gonna let them kind of speak for themselves. We have a speaker, and if you guys will take your places.
And Mrs. Smith, you've stepped in for someone else tonight, right?
Karina King is our music teacher. She is the one who has worked with these students tirelessly, tirelessly for the last few months, and I just stepped in at the last minute. She couldn't be here due to unforeseen circumstances, but let me tell you, pretty much I made sure the drums got here. And everything else, the kids know.
And, Mr. Chairman, the music will be a little loud because they have to hear it to play, so.
Okay.
I'm here for some loud music.
Firstly, we would like to say thank you for allowing us this opportunity to perform and share with you the Drum Line. This first song we are going to perform is Carol to the Bell by the Trans-Siberian Orchestra on a drum, bucket drum. In this piece, we learned about different parts of the drum and how to play and read progressive drum music. Our last song is Best Day of My Life by American Authors on Entrepreneurial Drive. In this piece, we learned about improvisation in 16 minutes in an African drum. Thank you again for this opportunity to be helping you out.
All right.
We could ask the parents of these, these students to stand. We want to give you a big hand as well, parents of these students. And then, any extra Woodland staff members that are here?
Well, we've got Karina King here.
Ms. King, thank you.
So she's calling her as a...
I know, bless her heart.
She's really happy.
Regina Boone, years first here, Hardin County Education Association. You didn't bring no kindergarten students to do one of those tonight?
I'm exhausted, kindergarten chairman. Good evening, Chairman Wise, good evening, Board, good evening, Superintendent. I'm a kindergarten teacher at G.C. Burkhead. I was currently serving as the president of the Hardin County Education Association. This week, we received an email from our superintendent where Hardin County staff and students were allowed to donate to the tornado victims in Western Kentucky. So on behalf of the Hardin County Education Association, we always try to do our part. We are partners with them as well, being members of KEA. We have colleagues and friends and students across the state in the western part of the state. So tonight, we have a check for you for $500 from the Hardin County Education Association. So, last time I gave a check to Mr. Jane, but Mr. Steph took it. So do you want me to give it to Mr. Steph?
That would be great.
He takes all of our money.
He takes all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate that. Great effort.
And Ms. Boone, I have a question. One of the latest things they are requesting are sleeping bags or blankets, because some people are still trying to remain in their home, but they don't have heat. Would that be an acceptable use of your all's funds?
You all use it how you see fit. You gonna donate to county resource centers, whatever you want to do, we donate, we give it to you, and we trust that you all are gonna do what we do.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Dolly Gunther, mask.
That was really quick, I wasn't prepared. Thought you all were gonna do a few more things, so it took me just a moment. Well, I brought again today the letter dated April 24th, 2020 regarding, it's to the manufacturers of the mask from the FDA. And I want to state on page three, scope of authorization. The face masks are not intended to be used by healthcare professionals as meaning they are neither substitutable for respiratory protective devices such as filtering face, peace respirators, nor surgical face masks. Authorized face masks. On page four, the labeling must not state or imply that the product is intended for antimicrobial or antiviral protection or related uses, or is for use such as infection prevention or reduction. The product is not labeled as a respiratory protective device and therefore should not be used for particulate filtration. Page five, shall not be labeled as a surgical mask to provide liquid barrier protection for use in a clinical setting where the infection risk level through inhalation exposure is high. For antimicrobial, shall not be used for antimicrobial or antiviral protection or related uses, or use for infection prevention or reduction or related uses. On page six, conditions related to advertising and promotion. No printed matter, including advertising or promotional materials relating to the use of the authorized mask may represent or suggest that such product is safe or effective for the prevention or treatment of patients during the COVID-19 pandemic. All advertising and promotional descriptive printed matter, excuse me, related to the use of the product shall clearly state this product has not been FDA cleared or approved. And I will give that to you as, you all just need that, in case there is a lawsuit, you can't state that you did not receive anything. Also, I'm up here representing our military who have children in this school system, who are not, not all. I am representing some of them that would like to speak out, but they are afraid they'll lose their jobs for speaking out. And that includes doctors, nurses, law enforcement, fire department, and EMS. I'm not here for all of them, some of them are okay with this. I am for those that want to speak out but are afraid because they are afraid they will be fired. So I am standing here in solidarity for them, and also I have a petition that I'm going to leave with you as well, and I'll let you read that later. And that's all I had to say, thank you.
All right, we will move on to construction updates. We had our lunch meeting today at Vine Grove, and Alliance and J.R.A. seem to think everything is moving forward, progressing on schedule as much as possible this time. We trying to keep a good track on things this time on the school, because we don't want it to be like East Hardin. A year and a half later, but things are moving along, you know, anytime we build next to a new, or existing school, they ran into some small issues of some drainage pipe and thing that we didn't know were there, so they're working it out, and basically said they would know more about things in a month or so, but we hope to have a big part of the groundwork done by the next board meeting, so. John, you anything you need to add to it? Be glad for you too.
I think you got it, Chairman.
All right. And of course, in the consent agenda, it's pretty basic this time. We're approving the family resource and youth service centers districts assurance certification for 2224, and approving the 2223 school calendar. It seems strange to be, already we're talking 23 out here tonight, but it won't be long now. And we're approving James T. Alton Middle School beta to travel to Louisville, and that's, will be with a commercial carrier due to the bus driver shortages we have. We're approving the monthly financial reports, orders of the treasures, and school activity fund balance report, and approval of some change orders at Central Hardin renovation project that I was telling you about a little earlier there. We're approving a special inspection steel package for Central Hardin, and a revised incentive pay that we're approving. And we received information on the 2022 summer projects that's gonna be going on. We're looking at Woodland getting some new HVAC and, or in the summer design phases on it. Hopefully, we'll have it out for bid where we can get some of that work done in the summer, or all of it done in the summer, let's put it that way. Everything else is certified personnel actions, classified personnel. We have some PAC information that we received in the site-based council meetings, so. And the new agenda, or we have a new business item that got on this old agenda, so if one got picked up outside, it wouldn't be on there, right?
We have it moved to under action items, so after y'all approve the consent agenda, we'll approve that.
Right, okay, so we're just working on the consent agenda, and that one item will be down under action items. Do I have anything you wanna bring up, delete, talk about more? Dawn, you still with us? Move we adopt the consent agenda?
I'm still here.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
All right.
I think thoroughly discussed it today.
She's spent a lot of time sitting and keeping us in line there today, just wanted to make sure we were still intact. All right.
So he has a motion?
A motion, yeah. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Motion carries unanimously. All right, that takes us down to action items, and we have approval of date and time and location for the January board meeting. Are we talking about all of '22, or are we just going for the one month?
Just that one month, and then in January, we'll have to determine the rest of the meetings and share.
Do you all have any special times or anything? You want to stick to what our regular schedule would have been? We... It works, what we're doing. And we'll try to come up with something that'll fit your schedule maybe a little better, or you still might have to skip some of those new meetings, right? All right.
If she can, she was, might be able to do a remote, Ian, which would be very helpful.
Okay, all right, that'll work.
We could discuss that a little bit.
So that would be... So that would be, you have those dates?
That's the third. The first one would be the 20th, January 20th.
Right.
And that's the only one we would schedule. And then in January, we would do the rest of them for the rest of the school year.
We're going to have a noon meeting somewhere or we want to just have it here or?
Where's the new meeting in January, Casey? Heartland?
Heartland?
Heartland.
Okay.
Is that a typo on the decision paper? It says January 22nd at 6:00.
Right beside that, it says January 20th at 11:30 at Heartland and then January 22nd at Central Office at 6:00.
That's on Saturday.
January 22nd? Okay, yes, that is a typo. It's supposed to be January 20th, not the 22nd. The 22nd is a Saturday.
Yes.
So.
That's what she was referring to.
Okay, thank you.
Good job. All right. So would I hear a motion to set those dates?
I move that we set the January lunch meeting for 11:30. January 20th, 11:30 at Heartland and January 26:00 PM at the Central Office.
I'll second the motion.
All right, have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And we are going to approve the revisions to policy 3.122 and 3.222. You want updates just a little bit or?
Yes, this is both classified and certified. So if a person were to move from a position that earns vacation days or, I guess vacation days is the easiest way to say it, from that position to a position that does not allow for vacation days, they would be paid out at the time of resignation or retirement at that time. This is something the retirement system needs us to do. So it would be paid out at that time and not wait for them to actually leave the district. It's really if they change a position within the district for that.
I guess in my terms, that would be, this don't happen very long, but, or very often, but say a principal like Bethne gets tired of being a principal and wants to go back to just teaching someday. She, we can compensate for the vacation days when they actually go backwards. Teachers, I didn't realize this is exactly the way it was, but they don't earn vacation days. And when they go to the longer jobs in a year of principals and so forth, they accumulate vacation days because of the time they're in there. So for the folks out there that's watching the TV, maybe that'll help them understand because it did me.
And if you don't mind, if I could talk about the incentive pay? Since we have people on TV watching, this is for employees of Harden County schools. If they go out and recruit a classified person to work in our childcare, to be a bus driver, to work as a custodian, child nutrition worker, we are in desperate need of those positions. So if an employee in the district recruits someone and they work for us for six months, they would get $250. And then if they work for us a year, it would give $500. So we want folks to go out and tell everyone how great it would be to work for us. And we would then give them that incentive pay to recruit others to come and work for us.
And I have already had a bus driver try to recruit me to be a bus driver.
That's awesome. If you do it for a year, they will get $500 or so.
Sorry. All right. Small things happen in this world and I'm telling you. Okay. Yeah, we need to.
Yeah, we need to actually prove those things.
Yes, we do.
All right, then I move that we approve the amendments as described in our discussion here. But the, well, I'll never be able to recall them correctly. So as discussed.
Okay. It's 3.122 and 3.222.
Yes, a second.
All right, have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And we have one more. What did I write here? All right, yes. Approval to declare football bleachers from the Old East Harden Middle School surplus and donate them to the Harden County Fair Board. We talked about that today at the noon meeting. We have some old bleachers that were around the football field. Joe Stucker advised us as one of our maintenance people that we would not use those on one of our facilities without doing some refurbished work. So we've decided to, or we're considering declaring them surplus and they can use them at the fairgrounds. They can refurbish them or whatever they would like to do to make them usable for some extra bleachers at the fairgrounds. So as we discussed today, we feel comfortable with declaring them surplus and letting them have them to use them. So we would need a motion to do that or any other discussion if anyone wants to pull them out and save them. We'll do whatever you desire.
I can't imagine we should save them. It sounds like the Fair Board has a good use for them. So I move the Harden County Board of Education to clear the football bleachers at the Old East Harden Middle School surplus and donate them to the Harden County Fair Board.
I'll second that.
All right. Any other discussion? Not. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Superintendent's report.
Excellent. Want to congratulate, glad Mr. Wells is here. If you did not see it in the newspaper, you can also watch it on television. But the Harden County schools were represented very well at the Altech Challenge, which is a great community event. It's problem-based learning. A lot of the presentations required engineering, which is what Altech is hoping to get out of this. The end game is to get students interested in engineering, finding a problem, and finding the solution. And in this situation, John Harden High School program did a presentation and they came in first place. So they will win $10,000 to carry out that project, which is to provide food for warm blessings and within the school district to include fish, which is really cool. And they just did a fantastic job. All of our other schools, we had presentations by North Harden and other groups from John Harden, and it was just great to see those students work together. It is on Harden County Educational Television. I encourage you to watch that because it will make you have great faith in our future leaders that they can find, identify a problem and find a solution to that. So just really impressed with all the groups there and congratulations to John Harden for that win. I know Mr. Hall and his students were incredibly excited. Is that an understatement, John? So we really appreciate our community partners, Altech, for putting that out there and allowing. We had schools from Larue County, Elizabethtown, and Harden County schools all involved in that. So 10 groups presented, and that was narrowed down from many other projects. So great participation by all three districts there. Also, just want to say thank you to our community partners, our police officers. They took numerous students shopping and their families. We had multiple groups, Hot Rods and Machines went shopping for at least 250 students. And we have had endless churches and organizations to come and assist our students throughout Harden County with that. And then you take into consideration the tornado in western Kentucky and everyone who has just donated for those calls. We have several semis going down from this area, but we also are collecting funds that will go to the family resource centers in those identified areas. So when the money quits coming in, the family resource centers will have gift cards and money to give to those families as they know their needs better than anyone. So just really appreciate everyone's kindness here during the season and hopefully better days ahead for all of those people down there. So, thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need an executive session tonight. And board calendar, December 20th through the 31st, winter break, school dismissed. Offices closed on December 23rd and 4th. And then they're closed back again on the 30th and the 31st. So I guess January the 4th will be the first day of students back in schools. And January the 17th will be offices closed for Martin Luther King Jr. Day. So that's about all we have. Thank you all for coming out. Have a Merry Christmas and hopefully we'll get started off on the New Year right. Thank you all. Need a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.